So before we begin, I want to start by thanking Father Flager. Thank you to the faith community of St. Sabina for hosting us. We're very appreciative of that. And I'm also going to give Father Mike a chance to open us up. But before we do that, Adam, you aren't grabbing that card for me with the names? I'll grab it.
So as we all know, our city has wrestled with gun violence for a while. But I do want to take a minute to have a moment of silence for the students who have recently been killed in our city outside of their schools. Thank you. And I'd also like to have one more moment of silence. We are currently in the sixth district. Our district council member, Ayesha Humphries, lost her father. And we want to let her know that she's covered, that we appreciate her, that we love her, and also take a moment to lift her and her family up. So if you can please join me in one more moment of silence. Thank you. With that, we will begin. I would ask that Father Flager, who is our gracious host this evening, would come and welcome us.
Good evening. Oh, y'all could have been better than that. Good evening. I just want to welcome everybody here and welcome the commission and the panelists here. We love to have St. Sabana be a place where public discussion can take place. That's what we try to do here and be about here. I would just ask everybody to remember two things. One is we're in a sanctuary. And remember that we respect the sanctuary in the place we're in. But secondly, and more important than that, is that we respect each other. I know this is a very heated issue. I'm very passionate about this issue too, where I stand. My son was killed two blocks from here on a Saturday afternoon at 18 years old. So this is very passionate to me also. But just ask everybody to just respect each other, listen to each other. We can disagree with each other. We can be strong, but at the end of the day, we got enough division and disrespect in the city and in this country. Let's listen to each other. Let's respect each other. Thank you very much. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Also, we are currently in the 17th ward, which is the home ward of Alderman David Moore, who cannot be here with us today. But he did send words via his staff, and I would like to offer them the opportunity to come up and speak.
How's everybody doing this evening? All right. Thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, Father Flager, for hosting us this evening and everybody for coming here. So I'm here on behalf of Alderman David Moore out of the 17th Ward Aldermanic Office. One of the things Alderman does, Moore is in full support of, is this ShotSpotter. Reasons why is it's one of the biggest tools that our police department has in regards to many tools that they don't have anymore. All right. We had just earlier this week, someone got shot. ShotSpotter was the reason why the police knew. Nobody called 911, nobody reported it or anything like that. And sometimes because gun violence happens in the city, not always people call on it. And sometimes ShotSpotter is the reason why we can identify a certain area and place where these things are actually happening and going on and be able to save somebody's life or prevent another shooting from actually happening within the city of Chicago. We cover Inglewood, West Inglewood, Chicago Lawn, Auburn Gresham. And yes, those are some of the areas that we cover within the 17th ward. And having just this program going on, period, we just want to say we're trying to be ahead of violence prevention. We want to make sure we're one of the leaders in it as we meet with different organizations within the 17th ward, different people that support this effort, different people who've been victims of gun violence have come forward to our office, have talked to us one-on-one. And they've said, hey, I see this thing on the street. What is it? They ask us about it. We inform them of it. We tell them some of the statistics behind it of the ways that it has helped the community in ways that it, you know, can continue to help the community. And some people aren't aware of what's actually going on with that. Some people don't know the numbers behind it. Some people don't know exactly the benefits to it and everything like that. But we just wanted to let you guys know, and thank you for coming out this evening to let you know that we are in full support of ShotSpotter. We do support it and hope that you guys do too, okay? Thank you.
Test, test, test. Test, test. You all can hear me? So I appreciate that. For the record, I thought Alderman Moore was welcoming us, welcoming us to his ward. I didn't know that. I didn't know that that was happening, but I appreciate the Alderman stance and appreciate the points that you made. The February 8th special meeting of the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability is called to order at 6:42 PM. We will begin with the call of the role to establish quorum. Commissioner Brown. Is she virtual? Commissioner Brown, can you hear us? I'll move on. Commissioner Driver is present. Commissioner Gomez. Commissioner Loizen. Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Terry. Commissioner Troncoso. Do we have any members of the Community Commission present virtually? If somebody verified that for me. Can we, are we able to hear? Okay. Who's all here? I don't know how many people are present. It's just Beth? Okay. With five members of the Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability present, we have a quorum and we can conduct the commission's business. The next item of business is public comment. People who wanted to speak during the commission's public comment period tonight were asked to submit their names in writing earlier tonight. Names were then drawn at random by a member of the commission staff. Speakers will be called in the order in which their names are drawn. If your name is called to offer public comment, we ask that you approach the microphone and line up in the order in which your name is called. When it's your turn to speak, please say your name and then spell your name and then offer your comments. Each speaker will have two minutes. We have allotted a total of 20 minutes for public comment. If the number of interested speakers exceeds the time dedicated to public comment, speakers will be drawn, selected at random, at a random drawing. Our first, are we ready for virtual? Our first speaker is Betty Wilson. Betty Wilson, present? Am I moving on? Okay, got you.
Good morning. I mean, good morning, all night. Good evening to everyone. Thank you, Anthony Driver, and to the commission board. I'm going to try to read this real quickly. In regards to the ShotSpotters, the ShotSpotters, I believe is necessary in that it is important as far as the technology to help the police locate narrow, narrow locations as to where they're coming from correctly. It can pinpoint more accurately than someone when you call and they're trying to tell them where the shots are coming from, you know? So the ShotSpotters are important as far as our community. On the South Side of Chicago, it is necessary that we have the ShotSpotters. I know that it might not be as far as some other neighborhoods, but for the South Side of Chicago, it is important. And I believe that because people are not educated and they might not understand the whole significance of why we have the ShotSpotters, then they feel that it's insufficient. And it's not. So I believe that we should, I am all for it. I'm a B facilitator for the fourth district and B 414. So I am against it, and that's what I stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call three names now. You can line up in the order in which you're called. Next, we have Asia Smith. We have alderwoman Silvana Tavarez, and then Maria Pike.
Hi, can folks hear me? My name is Asia Smith. I'm a director at AFFC, Black Youth Project 100 member, and most importantly, a community member. I'm here to talk to you about the necessity of canceling the ShotSpotter contract. ShotSpotter is an incredibly dangerous, ineffective, and expensive gunshot detecting system costing our city about $9 million. I have personally talked to folks in the community where ShotSpotter is located, and I've heard firsthand people talk about how they do not want surveillance in our neighborhood, bringing police who are highly charged, anticipating gunfire is extremely dangerous. We only have to look at what happened to our beloved community member, Adam Toledo, whose life was taken by CPD after being alerted by a ShotSpotter detection system. The problem is ShotSpotter is reactive, not preventative. It can only respond, not prevent. We know that the root cause solution to gun violence is the only way to address it at the source. We know that this technology is extremely faulty. Chicago's own OIG report shows that evidence of gun-related criminal offenses was found in just 9.1 of ShotSpotter initiatives and deployments. This is under 10%. That is completely unacceptable. For $9 million, we get a system that has mistaken cars backfiring and fireworks for gunshots. There are representatives in the ShotSpotter company who are here to tell you that this invasive surveillance technology works, that it has reduced crime. That is a lie. All ShotSpotter has done is lined the pockets of the company that has created it. We, the people who live in this city, deserve better than this. And I've seen far too many politicians who have vowed to the community that they will cancel this contract, put their political and corporate self-interest over the sake of the people. Regardless of this conversation that happens here tonight, the fact remains, we need money for housing, we need money for education, we need money for mental health care, not surveillance. It cannot and will not keep us safe. Please cancel this contract. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alderman Silvana Tavarez of the 23rd Ward. And the issue of ShotSpotter has become less about public safety and more about political spin. And I want to lay out three quick points. Number one, ShotSpotter does not lead to so-called illegal stops. As clearly stated in Terry versus Ohio, a police officer may stop a suspect without probable cause to arrest. If the police officer has a reasonable suspicion that the person has committed, is committing, or is about to commit a crime, and has a reasonable belief that the person may be armed and presently dangerous, ShotSpotter does not give police officers this ability. The Supreme Court of the United States does. Number two, critics of ShotSpotters say the technology does not prevent crime. They fail to understand the difference between violence prevention and responding to crime after it has occurred. What is needed before the gunshot is different from after. Once the bleeding starts, it's not the organizers that are needed, but the police and EMS to save lives and preserve evidence. And number three, another argument against ShotSpotter is the supposed racist deployment in communities of color. As a Latina born in Little Village and raised in Brighton Park, let me make this very clear. People of color are more often the victims of gun violence, and I have a problem with outside groups pushing to remove a tool that cuts response times for officers, leading to faster treatment and more evidence to lock up violent offenders. If there is a tool that allows officers to respond more quickly, tune gun violence, and treat potential victims, why would we deprive these communities of this resource? ShotSpotter is an issue now because certain people have made it an issue. It's due to efforts of organizations and politicians trying to redirect money from public safety technology into their own pockets by using biased studies, slanted statistics, and ignoring the case laws which govern policing to defend criminal behavior. One last thing, one last thing.
Before, wait one second. So I want to be very clear, extremely clear. I will be respectful to everybody in this room. If you are disrespectful, if you are yelling over people who have a right to public comment, if you do not respect their point of view, I will ask for you to be removed expeditiously. This is the only time I'm saying that. Thank you.
And I want to end with this last.
And if you don't mind, if you can close because the time is up.
I am. And I want to end with this question. If somebody may have fired a gun in your neighborhood, would you like the police to automatically investigate? I think the answer is clear to any unbiased person with common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. Thank you, Father Flager. My name is Maria Pike. I am an advocate. I'm a survival mom. And I am a member of several groups in Inglewood, one Rage, Teamwork Inglewood. In 2017, when the ShotSpotter technology was being tested, the pilot was on the 7th district. And Commander Johnson at the time would come to our meetings and would give us the comp stats. I'm sure most of you know what a comp stat is. So what he showed was that there was a decline of 45% crime after they installed the pilot. And then they decided to deploy across Chicago. I just have a friend of mine whose brother was killed in a district that does not have ShotSpotter. And he died for lack of attention because, you know, he was shot and nobody called the police. So I do believe, I believe that the technology is very efficient. $9 million is a drop in the pocket compared to $2.1 billion that we spend yearly on crime. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are, actually before that, the next three speakers are Catherine Shaw. I believe this says Remis Herrera. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. And Raven Gary or Siri? Gary, sorry about that. The first name? That person I hear? First name was Catherine Shaw. There we go.
Hi, y'all. Can everyone hear me? Hi, my name is Catherine Shaw, and I'm an educator, organizer, and social science researcher here in Chicago. I'm urging the mayor to cancel the ShotSpotter contract. Solutions to gun violence must come from impacted communities, not police or companies that profit off of and rely on violence to justify their existence. To address gun violence, we must interrogate the ways in which we are violent toward young people. Hunger is violent. Poverty is violent. Deteriorating schools and parks are violent. And continuing to fund death-making institutions, police prisons, and surveillance over life-affirming supports perpetuates violence. Excuse me. This includes funding, public mental health centers, community-based violence prevention organizations, jobs, and after-school programs. Independent research suggests this gunshot detection technology is faulty, increases stop-and-frisk tactics, causes thousands of dead-end deployments, slows police response times, and enables dangerous interactions between Chicagoans and police officers that have resulted in wrongful imprisonment and death. Over one-third of ShotSpotter-related arrests aren't related to firearms at all. This commission must use its power and influence to push for actual accountability in all areas of policing, from arbitration to the use of surveillance. It is CCPSA's responsibility to push the mayor to make the right decision on this matter and urge the city to end its use of ShotSpotter and its relationship with the company profiting off of it immediately. We have wasted over $48 million on this technology. The time to cancel the contract is now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Remis Herrera, R-E-M-I-S Herrera, H-E-R-R-E-R-A. On October 15th, my brother was shot and killed coming home from work. It's reported that no one had seen this agent. I waited for weeks and put on the ground and asking, and it's still an ongoing investigation, but we've been asking neighbors, have they called 911? Did anyone like come? Did anyone? So if, 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 if seconds, if this technology, if this technology can save and can, and the difference between saving someone's life is seconds, according to EMS responders, there's, I don't understand how we can quantify a person's life. Put yourself into a place where, as a law-abiding citizen, and you're, you become a victim of gun violence, and no one comes to your rescue, no one comes to your aid. I want you to quantify the value of that and let her, let her know, like, how much is your life worth? How much is your family's member's life worth? And really, like, this is a lifesaving technology. And unfortunately, my brother is in here. Had it been for ShotSpotter, he would have been alive. So I just like want to have that sink into you and really like, what is the life? What about, if you want to quantify a person's life, what is that value is? And is it really? Is it really 9 million? Is your, is your life, is your love life worth, life worth 9 million? Or is your life worth the 9 million?
My name is Raven Gary, R-A-V-E-N-G-E-A-R-Y. And I'm a journalist. I also know I'm a white lady here on the South Side, and people probably have thoughts about that. I do too. But I'm here because I report on the police. For the last several years, I've been knee-deep in the world of CPD, what they do, what they think, and what they post to social media. And one thing I've seen over and over again observing these officers is how much disdain they have for the communities they serve. It's not an individual problem. The institution is irredeemable. Every single person who passes through that academy has their mind poisoned against humanity, and that includes being primed to see the communities they serve as enemy combatants. So when we look at something like ShotSpotter, we see people saying it's very high-tech, it's scientific. But we have to keep in mind it's a tool that we're putting into the hands of people. Humans have to decide what to do with the information it provides in time. And again, it's providing bad information. Just two weeks ago, 8553 South Winchester in Gresham, not far from here, a gunshot alert went out, CPD showed up, and an officer fired his gun. It was a false alarm. He shot at an unarmed individual. According to scan our audio from that evening, it may have even been a child setting off fireworks, just like Eric Stillman, Adam Toledo's killer. This officer is a veteran, a Marine. Is the cost of another dead kid acceptable? Because child or adult, I don't think it is. No study has ever proven ShotSpotter can distinguish between gunshots and other loud sounds. Studies have proven it delays 911 response times. People are less likely to call 911 because they have ShotSpotter in their communities. Thousands of false alarms a day because we live in a city with noise happening all around us. It's sending cops on dozens of calls a day chasing ghosts. It's a waste of time and money. It's already put people in jail on false charges that could kill more people. It has no hands in the place of Chicago police or police anywhere. The cost is too high. And if you don't care about dead kids, care about the fact that it doesn't work. Any reasonable person would let this contract expire. Our next three speakers, Jose Almanza, FTP Chicago Jordan, and Aysen Daya?
Everybody. My name is Jose Manu Almanza, J-O-S-E-M-A-N-U-E-L-A-O-M-A-N-Z-A. Fellows Westsiders, I want to say thank you and to our fellow South Side neighbors for welcoming us and providing us this beautiful space to have this beautiful discussion because this is what it's all about, solidarity. I want to take a moment to ground us a little bit. You know, you're going to be hearing some pro-ShotSpotter people saying it saves lives. You're going to hear some community members saying that it doesn't, it doesn't work. And the reason we're here today is to figure out, if you're saying it works, prove it. If you're saying it works, let the OIG inspect the algorithm. Let Lucy Parsons' lab take a look at the actual device and the algorithm that decides if something is a gunshot or not. What do you have to lose by letting us see it? Money. That's what they have to lose. More gun violence, more money in Ralph Clark's pockets. More gun violence, more money in Ralph Clark's pockets. So they have literally no incentive to reduce gun violence because then they won't, they will be making any money. So I just want everyone to remember that we're here to figure out if we want this or not. And the best way that we could decide if we want to spend $10 million a year is for ShotSpotter to prove that this works, not just say it does, not just share stories that it does, but open up the algorithm, let the OIG inspect it, verify it, and then we can have a conversation about whether it works or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt you. One second, one second. Anthony, just want to recognize that I'm here and also that Cliff is on the virtual meeting just for the sake of form. Sorry about being late.
Is that six commissioners now?
Seven. Cliff is on the.
For the purposes of quorum and the record, all seven commissioners of the CCPSA are present. Thanks, OG.
Hello, my name is Jordan. I am representing my organization, FTP Chicago, urging you to cancel the contract. The people of Chicago are living in unbelievably hard times. Every year, the continuing global pandemic worsens its effects on people's mental, physical, emotional, social, and economic well-being. The deteriorating global economy has skyrocketed the price of food, healthcare, and housing, all while, all while our elected leaders and their wealthy handlers attempt to line their pockets through the waging of genocidal wars at our expense and by gouging the prices of our basic necessities. The systemic failures in our society have become so pronounced that we have all seen with our own eyes the immediate and devastating effects on public safety it has on our neighborhoods. The illegal drug trade, which is a product of this systemic failure, which is a product of historical and intentional divestment from black communities and which is a product of Reagan-era conspiracy, is the source of two major public safety crises. One being an overdose crisis for those who experience substance dependency, and the other being a gun violence crisis for low-level distributors who occupy the most dangerous section of a trafficking operation. These crises are not new. People have been demanding systemic change for decades, and now Chicago is united in demanding effective investment in our public safety. Amidst these dire circumstances, the city tells us they hear our demands, and the city has surely spent money, but in their infinite consistency, the people in elected positions have once again failed the people of Chicago by pissing away $50 million on a racist CPD toy that does not work and by design does nothing to address the root causes of gun violence. Instead, the CPD were given secretive money and an experimental technology to do whatever they want because our leaders do what they always do and gave them the money, no questions asked. ShotSpotter does not work. It exists to do nothing else besides scrape profits out of a gun violence crisis, and the contract with this company needs to end. The city of Chicago has a public safety problem. Countless leaders have put together countless public safety solutions, and yet the $50 million was given to ShotSpotter and the CPD and no positive chance to speak of. The organizers with the Shot, Stop Shot.
Please wrap your comments up.
Have fought hard to get to this contract canceled. The intensity of said fight needed to get us to this point shows us that all, the only criminals that need to be surveilled this closely are the petty thugs.
Thank you, thank you for your comment. That's time.
And the CPD officers themselves. Cancel the contracts.
Can I hold for one second? You ready?
Hey, y'all. My name's Ishan. I'm an organizer and a community member here in Chicago, and I'm calling on the Johnson administration to fulfill its word for CCPSA to support him in doing that and making the decision that drives. and making the decision that drives public safety in a real way within the city and cancel the contract with ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter is a piece of surveillance technology that's used all over the world from Chicago to occupied Palestine, as I see this kaffiyah hanging from this cross in front of me in this beautiful church, to South Africa, surveil black, brown, and Muslim folks, and manufactures situations to allow police to have a militarized response in our communities. Not only is ShotSpotter ineffective in what it says it does detecting gunshots, though it can't differentiate between a gunshot and a firework. Not only has it led to the murder of children in our community like thirteen-year-old Adam Toledo, not only does it waste our resources, we know surveillance fundamentally is not public safety. We know that stop and frisk is not public safety. We know that more guns in our neighborhoods is not public safety. But we do know that public safety is access to stable housing and supporting policies like Bring Chicago Home that create more affordable and accessible housing in the city. We do know that public safety is free and accessible mental health care with a caring crisis response like Treatment Not Trauma. We do know that public safety is having community infrastructure that supports our dignified needs. We elected Brandon to the fifth floor. We brought about the CCPSA to be a voice of the people, to be different than mayors and councils past, to abide by promises for investing in people and not in criminalization, to invest in healing the root causes of violence rather than punitive forms of response. When I look around this room, I see our community standing up for what we believe in with the knowledge and the power that the resources that are spent on surveillance are actually our resources, saying firmly that we do not want to be complicit in the continued policing, surveillance, harassment, and racism that undergirded ShotSpotter and these surveillance technologies. We're saying firmly that we won't take the excuse that the city doesn't have the funds to invest in food access, in grief counseling, in violence prevention, in opening additional mental health centers when it's invested over fifty million dollars over the last six years in ShotSpotter. I'm demanding that the CCPSA supports Mayor Johnson and that Mayor Johnson also cancels the contract for ShotSpotter. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment period. The next order of business is our special hearing on the city's use of ShotSpotter and acoustic sound detection technology. Before we get started, I wanna lay out lay a foundation for us. Our goal tonight is to gather information, to hear from people with different perspectives on this issue and to try to get a better understanding of all arguments. A few ground rules for tonight. All of our panelists have volunteered their time to be here and to engage in a thoughtful discussion on the continued use of ShotSpotter. We ask that everyone remain respectful throughout tonight's discussion and allow each panelist the opportunity to answer the questions that are posed to them. Tonight's discussion will have three parts. The first part will be a discussion moderated by myself. Following that, each commissioner will then get an opportunity to ask questions of the panelists. We will end by taking additional questions from the audience. If you would like to ask a question, we ask you fill out one of the comment cards at the at the front or that our staff Julie is holding. List your name and your question on the card. A member of the CCPSA staff will collect them, and I will then ask some of those questions at the end of this meeting. We will try to get through as many questions as we can. Before I introduce our panelists, I'd like to make some opening remarks. The city of Chicago entered into a contract with ShotSpotter, now known as Sound Thinking, in twenty seventeen. The contract is about technology that is used to detect gunshots, identify where they are coming from, and give police information about the gunshots and the location. The contract has has been extended twice now, and it will end on February sixteenth. The mayor will be deciding whether to enter into a new contract with the company to provide gunshot detection technology or to stop using gunshot detection technology. At the end of the twenty twenty-three, at the end of twenty twenty-three, the commission received a petition to hold a special meeting on ShotSpotter. The petition fell short of the minimum required number of signatures to force a meeting. But we have heard a lot about this issue, and we believe in being responsive, so thought it the right thing to do to have this hearing. CCPSA has absolutely no authority over whether the city should enter into a new contract for gunshot detection technology. That decision is up to the mayor. The commission has not had a discussion one way or another about this issue to find where the where our collective voice is. This hearing is our first opportunity to publicly explore this issue. The CCPSA does not also does not know what the decision of Mayor Johnson will be on this contract. The commission can provide a forum for the community to discuss this and other issues that impact public safety in a way that ensures that voices of the most impacted communities are heard. This often doesn't happen during these debates. Today, we are provided a forum for communities to learn more about ShotSpotter. The commission, the commission wanted to put together a well-balanced panel with different perspectives on the use of this technology. We hope that this discussion will give the communities most impacted by issues of gun violence the information and resources they need to decide what's best for them. We have a great panel uh that we've assembled for tonight. I'll begin by introducing them. I believe they may be bios in the audience already, um, but I'm not going to read the bios. I would just introduce them by name if you would like to say a few words about, actually, let's do that. If we can just go down the line, you all introduce yourself for about thirty seconds. Not an opening statement, but just an intro.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deputy Chief Sonora Ben of Area Two. I've been on the department for twenty-four years.
Hi, I'm Nathan Palmer. Um, they she pronouns not he. Um, I'm a community. Oh, hi, I'm Nathan Palmer, um, community organizer. They she pronouns not he, please. I appreciate it. Um, I am living in the Austin neighborhood. I've organized with the Stop ShotSpotter campaign for two years. And yeah, I just wanna see my people stop getting arrested and stop dying.
Good evening. Daryl Smith, fifty-four-year resident of Inglewood, CEO of Peace, which stands for People Educated Against Crime in Inglewood. And being out combating crime, trying to stop things that's happening in the street for over thirty years, I just believe that I've seen a lot of things where ShotSpotter has helped.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ralph Clark, and I'm the president and CEO of ShotSpotter, and I've been with the company now for approximately fourteen years.
Good evening. Tenny Gross, Institute for Nonviolence, Chicago, part of Communities Partnering for Peace. Uh, we work in Austin, West Garfield, back of the arts, and the system we built with our partners has about two thousand people with backgrounds now working in different peace operations in the in the city, which is the largest de facto reentry program in the United States.
Thank you. Also want to acknowledge that we are joined by Noe Flores, who is the Assistant Director of Strategic Initiative Division for the Chicago Police Department, uh, who will also be here to help answer any technical questions that we may have. And Inspector General Deborah Ritzberg is present with us uh as well to answer any questions that we may have. Uh, Noe Flores and Inspector General Deborah Ritzberg are not on a panel, but they have agreed to make themselves available. Finally, before we begin the conversation, you all should know, you all should know that there is a lawsuit right now against the city of Chicago about ShotSpotter. I'm going to read to you what the city of Chicago Law Department wrote to us about the lawsuit and what it means for tonight's panel. Because of this pending litigation, city representatives are constrained in what they can say on certain issues, and they may need to decline to answer certain questions. Declining to speak is normal and recommended when litigation is pending against any entity. The lack of CPD or the lack of city or CPD response to statements made or data presented at this hearing should not in any way be interpreted as the city's or the Chicago Police Department's agreement with or acceptance of any such statement or data. With that, we will begin our questions. Um, the question portion of this, these questions were sourced from the community. Uh, they were sourced from other commissioners. So although I will be the person asking the first part of these questions, um, these did not come directly out of my mind. So I wanna make sure I put that out there as well. Um, the first, the first question I'd like to uh address to Nathan Palmer. Your group, the Stop ShotSpotter Campaign, asked for today's hearing. What key concerns does your campaign have regarding the continued use of ShotSpotter?
Hello. Um, so the main concern that we have is gun violence in Chicago and gun violence because it affects black and brown people. My only reason for organizing is to try and uplift and liberate my people from my only reason for organizing is to uplift and try and liberate my people from the constraints of the system. We do not believe that ShotSpotter has the ability to significantly affect gun violence, not because we just, we just thought this on a whim, not because we are just so vehemently anti-police that even if they could help, we would say no, but because in all of ShotSpotter's existence, they have only marketed themselves as a police tool. It wasn't until the campaign in Chicago and the campaigns nationally started calling out that police are stopping and frisking our people in falsely incarcerating our people, showing up and firing shots at our people off of an uninspected technology. No matter what this technology is bound to do, what they claim it does at some point. A stop clock is right twice a day. Like, that's, that's a fact. So we're here because we want to figure out solutions for gun violence that not only address root causes, but that are able to respond on a block-by-block basis to this type of of horrible violence. We believe that organizations like Peace, organizations like you medics should be dispatched to these situations. Police, when they get there, they just wanna find someone to arrest. Yes, they may also find someone to help, but they are trying to arrest. If an active shooting is happening, that's gonna be two people dead if the cops show up, right? They are not trying to stop the shooting. Um, we know how police treat our people, and that is it. Sorry, sorry.
The the next question I will direct to Deputy Chief Sonora Ben. Um, and that that question is simply, do you find ShotSpotter to be beneficial to the Chicago Police Department?
Thank you for that question, Anthony. Um, yes, I do believe that the ShotSpotter technology is beneficial for the Chicago Police Department. And uh, I say that because uh I I was hearing some of the comments of this was a uh surveillance tool that is being used. It's an acoustic tool for us to be uh pointed in a direction where shots have been fired. And for me, being a part of the community, born and raised fifty-four years a Chicagoan and a Southsider. Uh, I'm in Washington Heights is where I stay. So I hear shots day in and day out. Now, for this technology for us, for the department, like I said, it's just a tool for us to use. It is not where uh it is something that we are using for surveillance. It's an acoustic tool that we use for us to detect where shots are being fired. It actually gives, it pinpoints exactly where the shot has been fired. It could be fired from the front of your yard, the backyard, the side. It definitely pinpoints and shows us where we can direct our officers to that location. So um, far as if this is a tool that for us to use for the department, yes, I say yes.
So following up with that question, can you, can you briefly walk us through what happens when an SDSC room receives a ShotSpotter alert?
Yes. So when the SDSC room receives an alert
And actually, I'm sorry to use uh, can you
Yeah, so
Strategic deployment.
Strategic Decision uh Center uh System. So basically, that is a room within each district. Each district has an SDSC room. And when a shot goes off, it pops up on the computer, and the officers in that room goes over the radio, and they give uh the dispatcher notification that a ShotSpotter just went off at a specific location. So the dispatcher then goes forward to give that job out to the officers. And that officers will respond to that particular location. Then they will proceed to look for if anyone has been shot. Uh, if not, we look for evidence, which will be shell casings of a ShotSpotter. And with that, uh, if shell casings is located, we will hold the scene. Officers will hold that scene for over thirty minutes. And if someone shows up shot at an hospital, then we will process that scene because that would be a crime scene at this particular point. Now, if no one shows up at the hospital after the thirty minutes, then those shell casings will be recovered and inventory under an R D number, and then those shell casings will be sent to ballistics.
So when you, when you say a R D number, um, because I've heard a lot about that, a lot of these incidents, and I don't know if this is true or not, um, don't end in like a police report. Is that something that will qualify? Is that, is that what you mean when you say R D number?
Every, if if there are shell casings that are recovered, that is a R D number. That is a case report generated for that particular incident.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question I will uh direct to Tenny Gross. And and that question is how is ShotSpotter information being shared with violence intervention and violence interruption organizations? Uh, and is this something that you find that is useful for non, non-police and police responsables?
We uh, we created protocols with CPD that they notify us. Uh, it's a one, it's called a professional understanding. It's a term we brought from LA, from our partners at Urban Peace Institute. And the information is one way. And it is, I think the vision, I'm encouraged by some of the signs I see here that we should invest in civilian responses, right? We have gone in the last forty years, everything is a nine one one, everything is either an arrest. And we're starting to build alternatives. There's opioids, there's domestic violence, there's mental health. In our case, responses to every incident of violence. Uh, I brought from the East Coast Victim Services, which is now also there. We have an academy for that. We're doing around, also not to overload the outreach workers. So last night, we were at two hospitals at Loyola and Stroger. One of them was a homicide, and the hospital asked us to leave. The family is irate and at pain. So I'm idealistic. I wanna get to root causes. I would like us not to not exist. Not only the police, us not to exist. We're in the business of fixing people. I rather, we have so much prevention and raising kids and theater and music. They won't need us when we often, our failure rate is quite high. But we don't, solutions is not just dealing with the ideal world, is how do we get there? And that is incremental steps. So we, in Austin and West Garfield, back of the art, I don't know if we had twenty percent of the shooting volume in the city. It's a lot. Every night, uh, we don't sleep that much. We we respond and respond. And as a civilian myself, as someone's been doing it for a long time, when I hear a shot, I can't tell the department go north of my house, south of my house, west of my house. I don't. The accuracy matters. It is a sound device. I have concerns about surveillance. I have concerns about if it's used for court cases, right? And it is very emotional.
So I I definitely appreciate your perspective, but we, for this question particularly, we just wanna focus on um, how your organization uses this and if it's helpful or if it's
It is helpful to know if there's conflicts that we're not aware of. We cover a lot of areas that something is heating up. And we will go and have conversations through our young people who are working and they were, is there something heating up? Is there something that needs to be mediated? It's not a perfect, it's one of the tools we use. We mainly wanna rely on relationships, but this is another tool, another safety net to see are we missing something?
And just a quick follow-up. You said that you mostly wanna rely on relationships, and this is just another tool. If this goes away, how does that impact the work that you do with community violence?
I still have dates in my calendar of mothers in other cities when they lost their son, and there was so, or child or daughter, who were angry that there wasn't response or time. Or the clearance, or the police didn't let the ambulance fast enough. So many things can fail. So being in the hospitals hundreds of times with families who lose their loved ones, it has an impact on our brain. Uh, so any, so in that level is the question that I think the mother or the sister asks here. That is hard to quantify. It doesn't mean I want corporate run amok. I don't, I think we are the, we are the taxpayers. We have a say in how it's done, where it's could tell if it's abused, if it's not used well by the department. There's a lot of steps can go wrong, but there is that important moment when we try and save lives. But there is that important moment when we try and save lives, all of us. And de- mediating a shooting versus a homicide, it's a different ballgame.
Thank you. My next, my next question, I'll, I'll direct to Daryl Smith. Um, and that question is simply, as a, as a fifty-four-year resident of Inglewood, uh, what benefits do you see from the use of ShotSpotter and what concerns do you have about it?
Well, first and foremost, um, boots on the ground means something in Inglewood and on the South Side. And I've been boots on the ground for thirty years. And I've held people in my hands that have bled out because the ambulance didn't get there quick enough. But where it really hits home, I had a nineteen-year-old daughter murdered, a sixteen-year-old daughter murdered, I'm sorry, in two thousand and nineteen. Okay? The ambulance didn't get there on time. And I think ShotSpotter, with the technology, the acoustics, pinging the police officer's car right away, if they're right around the corner, they can get there. Not necessarily to catch the offender, but they can render aid to the victim while the ambulance is trying to get through traffic to get there. Our organization, and if you look to my left, these men and women in these yellow vests, they walk these streets to ten, eleven o'clock at night to try to curb violence. We need all the help we can get. So I think Shot, ShotSpotter is a very necessary tool. If it's not needed in your neighborhood, good, we remove them from your neighborhood. But in our neighborhood, we need them.
The, the next, uh, the next question, um, I'll direct back to Deputy Chief Ben. And one of, one of the arguments to keep ShotSpotter is that it alerts CPD to activity that may not get a corresponding nine-one-one call for service. Do you have any idea about the number of ShotSpotter alerts that don't have corresponding nine-one-one calls?
So when you say correspondent for nine-one-one calls-
So I'll, I'll be specific and stagger this, uh, so in the case of Officer Arianna Preston, there was no call from, for nine-one-one. And I'm wondering how, um, how common is that, that there will be a ShotSpotter alert? And there is no nine-one-one call? Or do you, do you have any idea about that at all?
We, we have a few numbers where-
And I don't know if also if-
If, if Flores can chime in a bit.
If you, if you can come up to the microphone, this is, um, I don't, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no.
But he may be helpful.
Right, so.
Off the top of my head, I can't specifically say, but I know, um, depending on the situation, ShotSpotter alert on its own, you may get an nine-one-one call thirty percent of the time. Sixty to seventy, you probably will not. Uh, that may change a little.
Yes.
That may change a little, so.
Can you, can you repeat that also, by the way, in case folks didn't hear you?
Yeah, sorry, um, so depending on if it's just a ShotSpotter alert proper, where there's no, uh, let's say no shooting incident associated with it, that may be somewhere in the realm of twenty, thirty percent of the time, you don't get that corresponding nine-one-one call. Uh, sorry, seventy percent of the time, twenty, thirty percent of the time, you may get a corresponding call. When there's an actual event, an incident, that number probably jumps up a little. Because a lot of times the victims themselves are able to phone in. And we consider those corresponding calls to be shots fired calls, shots unviewed by officers or person shot calls. So that's kind of in the realm of where we-
And if you don't mind, um, if you don't mind, just, uh, I, I introduce you, but just a little bit, just, I, I just kind of called you out of the blue.
Yeah.
Just a little context will be helpful.
So a little context and I-
About yourselves and, and-
Yeah, um, so I work for the Chicago Police Department, I work with the data, but I've also, uh, in charge of like the S D C oversight. And a little background, I spent, uh, four years working with the University of Chicago Crime Lab and Chicago Police Department as the S D C analyst. So worked in a couple of, a lot of the north and northwest side districts. So, uh, very, uh, pretty familiar with how we, we use the technology in the department. Noe Flores.
Thank you. I did, I didn't know if you, if you wanted to elaborate further, but I think that kind of got to the, to the root of what I was trying to, with the question I wanted to ask. If you would like to, you can though.
No, that's fine, he, he took it.
Thank you. Um, so there's been studies cited that suggest that ShotSpotter causes police to respond to emergency calls more slowly. Um, Nathan, if you're prepared, can you, can you speak to that a little bit? Or if, um, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but that was, that was something that came up in our conversations with the Stop ShotSpotter campaign.
Yeah.
We'd love for you to elaborate on that.
Um.
And it was, gotta, it's hard to hear you.
So from my understanding of the data, from my understanding of all of, like, all of this information, right? That doesn't, um, necessarily give satisfactory, um, feelings for real-time instances of gun violence. But to my understanding of the data that Anthony just cited, a lot of times, much like when community members currently call police, they just don't show up. Like, that's what they do, bro. Like, we're talking with community members and well, and like, people don't show up, like, they're, like, there are people who, who, who have literally gone to the police station down the street from where someone was shot. And the police were like, okay, cool. And the, this is stuff that has been proven over and over again. So with ShotSpotter, sometimes it'll deprioritize police, either because they know, okay, there might not actually be someone, because the seventy percent of the time that there is no corresponding, um, call does not mean that someone is shot each of those times. It means someone shot a gun. If we want to talk about better gun training, if we want to talk about educating people on how and when to shoot guns, let's talk about that. If we want to talk about getting EMS there, let's talk about that. But police already don't respond, ShotSpotter doesn't improve that. I think that study was done in Kentucky, they are slower. And along with that information, if police do decide to go for ShotSpotter alerts, there are cities where it stops them answering other calls where they know someone is in trouble. Whereas again, that seventy percent estimate does not take into account, like, my neighbor who just popped out and shot his gun because he thought it was fun. Like, he literally was like, I just got this, I'm gonna shoot it. That man don't deserve to be interacting with police, but that is what they're siding with, that seventy percent estimate. And to wrap it up, the study from Kentucky, I believe, that, or maybe it was Dayton, it was another city that canceled their contract because it was ineffective. Um, they, they cited that police didn't prioritize them because it's like, much like police have done forever, they don't care about our neighborhoods anyways. Like, they don't, we know that they harass our people, y'all.
Um, my next question will be directed to Ralph Clark. Can you respond to the recent report, uh, by Jim Daly of the Southside Weekly that ShotSpotter has missed more than five hundred and fifty incidents in twenty twenty-two?
Uh, sure, thank you, thank you for that question. I think the first thing I would do is acknowledge-
Also, I'm, by the way, I'm getting texts about us not talking close to the mic. I've gotten a few now, so for the virtual audience and for the folks here, if you can get up and up close to person with the mic, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, is this good? Can you hear me okay?
Hi.
Great, thank you for that question. So the first thing I would have to say or acknowledge is that, um, ShotSpotter is not a perfect, uh, technology. I don't know any technology that is, uh, perfect. What I can say is that we contractually guaranteed ninety percent efficacy. And we know from our experience across a hundred and sixty, uh, customers or agency partners that we work with, we're operating at ninety-seven percent. Uh, we've been doing this a very long time. We are going to produce false positives and false negatives. Some of the criticisms that we've gotten around the ninety-seven percent is saying that that's a very inflated number because no one is reporting misses. Either false positives, which would be a case where we would say, here's a gunshot that happened, and someone would get there and confirm that it's not a gunshot, or a false negative, which when, we wouldn't send an alert out, but there was a gunshot. When you put all those things together, and I'm really happy to see that our customers are holding us to account for those misses, we're operating at ninety-seven percent. We have a contractual guarantee to operate at ninety percent. And if we go below that, there's steep financial penalties. As a company, we've always strived to do better and be better and push our agency partners to do better and be better as well. And that's just not with respect to technical efficacy, but it's also how the technology is used to bring about safer communities.
To your knowledge, has, has that number ever dipped below ninety percent or, or to a lower number? You're saying you're contractually obligated to meet the ninety percent mark? Um, the city of Chicago, I just want to understand you correctly. The city of Chicago and your company guarantees that you will detect above ninety percent of shots, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, that's ninety percent. That includes false positives, false negatives, getting alerts out less than sixty seconds. And also, there's a location accuracy, uh, figure in there as well, that we're going to be within eighty feet of where the gunshot occurred. So yeah, we've never fallen below ninety percent in the city of Chicago.
Thank you. The next question, I'll go back to Nathan Palmer. There are a lot of people in Chicago who don't call nine-one-one, especially in communities that have the most gun violence. There's evidence that ShotSpotter identifies many gunshots that don't resort to nine-one-one calls, as we just heard. Without this technology, we won't know about a lot of gunshots, and we won't be able to respond quickly to these situations where people's lives may be at risk. If we don't have gunshot detection technology, what will happen to all those people who could be hurt or have been hurt by gunfire?
I think we're seeing what happens to those people right now. ShotSpotter has been in effect in our city.
Nathan.
We are seeing, I'm sorry, we are seeing what happens right now. ShotSpotter has been affect, in effect in our city as early as twenty twelve in one ward. Twenty seventeen, my ward, the twenty-ninth ward, or fifteenth police district, my bad, because they go by districts and not wards, y'all. Um, that's when they got it, and then they started expanding a lot. The Inglewood example was a year. As we know, gun violence is still in existence even with ShotSpotter blanketing our neighborhoods. I don't, I don't need no snaps, but I appreciate y'all, um. Right now, our communities, yes, there is, there, there is a legitimate fear of retaliation for calling the cops. We cannot ignore that. I think someone touched on how the systemic violence of poverty, white supremacy, and constant police surveillance has affected our people's care for each other. The other folks, I don't call the cops, I was just robbed. I'm not calling the cops on some high schoolers who gone rob me, bro. I don't want them in prison. I want any, any community org, I want they mamas, I want, I want someone who cares about these kids to help these children. Often, I think, as Anthony grounded us with in the beginning, the perpetrators and survivors or victims of gun violence are children. These are not people who need to be re-traumatized with more armed people coming to them. If, again, if we want to talk about sur- like, trying to help survivors, ShotSpotter has never once, the police have never once said, maybe we should just send EMS, maybe we don't need more armed people. Maybe, like, right? ShotSpotter has instead expanded in police tech and surveillance. So what we do for those people right now, I want to see that nine million go directly to community violence inter- intervention orgs so that if they say that they can use ShotSpotter to save someone's lives, cool, these people are in the community. But take that away from Ralph Clark, the company don't need that.
Thank you, and um, you raised a, you raised a good question, and that is the reallocation of funds, which I have, uh, I've raised that question as well. And, and I have a, a, I've been briefed on it, but I'm wondering if there's, maybe Mr. Flores or anybody on the panel that can speak to whether or not those funds that are currently being spent but being used for ShotSpotter can be redirected into the community. Well, that's, that's, that is a question you are not going to be able to answer. That is a city of Chicago question.
Make a difference, but that's okay.
I just don't, I, I, I will come back to you, but I definitely want to know if there's anybody, um. Okay, so I'll answer the question because I've had a bunch of meetings and I've been briefed by a lot of folks on this particular issue. Um, first of all, I stand wholeheartedly and agree that we need to invest in our communities. Um, and I'm, I'm also a person who, who whipped the votes to get, uh, treatment on trauma in the budget during the last administration. So I, I would never discredit that. And I posed this question specifically to the city's budget office and other folks. Can this money that's being spent on ShotSpotter be redirected into communities? The answer that I received, and again, I'm no expert, so I'm not going to sit here and say I could stand behind this, but what I was told was that the funds that are spent on ShotSpotter come from a five-dollar tax that is authorized by the state of Illinois. That five dollars goes on every cell phone tax in the city of Chicago. That money has to be spent on O E M C or nine-one-one operations. So I do want to be clear about that. This is what I've been told, I'm no expert, but I've, I, the questions that the community members bring to me, I take them to the city, I take them to the budget office, and I ask these sorts of questions. So what I've been told is that if ShotSpotter contract is canceled, that money will have to go to a nine-one-one operation. It cannot be used for something else unless state statute is changed. And I don't know if there's anybody else who can speak more to that. I was hoping I didn't have to answer a question today, but there we are. Did you want to say something?
Um, I just think it's important that people have an opportunity to educate themselves on this issue. So I do want to just call out the fact, oh, that there is a state statute. It's twenty I L C S two-six-oh-five slash two-six-oh-five dash twenty-five. That's the statute, if you Google it, it will come up and you can read the, read it yourself. It's important to recognize that this is a product of a state law passed by Illinois legislators. It has nothing to do with any city ordinance. The mayor's office cannot change it unless they were to lobby their legislators to make that change. Um, and so I think it's really, it, it's important and significant that the facts are clear that when it comes to the actual cost, that cost is not being, um, taken from city coffers and it is not removing funding from monies that could be directed to all of the things that are listed, all of the things that Anthony supports, all of the things you have spoken about. Um, it's a matter of state funding. And pursuant to statute, it is directed in a specific place to ensure that nine-one-one and O E M C is fully funded. In addition, I think it's important to note that the calls that come in and the mechanism for directing police officers to scenes is an O E M C function. It is not a Chicago Police Department function. So those monies that we're talking about that are allocated pursuant to this statute support our O E M C, they do not support the Chicago Police Department insofar as it is O E M C that dispatches officers.
Thank you for that, and just to be clear, the O E M C is the Office of Emergency Management and Communications. Um, what most of us know as the nine-one-one center. Um, my next question is going to be long and is directed at Inspector General Witsberg, so I apologize in advance for this really long question I'm going to read you. The inspector general report is often cited to say ShotSpotter isn't effective and is not worth it. Did the, A, did the report look at the number? It's cause, cause, are we supposed to like? It's, sorry again. A, did the report look at the number of times a ShotSpotter alert made it possible to provide a medical, medical attention to someone who had been shot? Actually, is it okay if I break these out one by one, so this is not such a long question? Thank you. Uh, so yes, that's, that's the first question. Did the report look at the number of times ShotSpotter alert, alerts made it possible to provide medical attention to someone who has been shot that we have heard a lot about tonight?
We did not look at that, and if it's okay, I'll just introduce myself quickly.
Absolutely.
I am Deborah Witsberg, I'm Inspector General for the City of Chicago. We are an independent, nonpartisan watchdog agency within city government. And in twenty twenty-one, we published an analysis of CPD's data on the department's use of the ShotSpotter technology. That report, uh, did not reach the question of emergency medical response um, because our analysis was limited to police department data. An analysis of that question would, I think, require, um, some inquiry into the question of what kind of response the city is equipped to provide. So if we're responding lights and sirens, are we sending blue lights or red ones? Um, and what training, if any, is provided to members of the Chicago Police Department to render aid on the scene, um, when they do respond if they find a victim? Those are not questions that our report reached.
Thank you. Um, did the, did your report look at, at the number of times a ShotSpotter alert gets police to a place where shooting, where shooting was happening? So people stopped shooting and they left? Does, does that get counted as a positive outcome?
Uh, what our report, uh, what we measured in our report was the disposition of, um, of police dispatches in response to ShotSpotter alert. So a ShotSpotter alert comes in, a police response is dispatched, and then that event, it's assigned a unique identifier- and then that event, it's assigned a unique identifier called an event number, and that event number is coded for disposition with a certain category. And we looked at the percentage of those event numbers, which were coded in a way that represented association with a gun-related crime. So we identified certain offenses which were gun crime related, and we looked at the percentage of dispatched responses, which were coded out as a disposition as related to one of those crimes. We found that that rate is, was about nine percent. In about nine percent of responses to a ShotSpotter alert, they were coded out, they were reported as resolved, having to do with a gun-related crime, about nine percent of it.
Thank you, and just one more question. Your report says that CPD responses to ShotSpotter alerts rarely produce evidence of a gun crime or a gun-related crime, investigatory stop, or recovery of a firearm. But it also later in the report talks about CPD got evidence of a gun-related offense in four thousand five hundred and fifty-six cases. So I guess I'm just trying to, well, we're trying to understand the nuance there and what you were trying to get across in that particular point.
So that four thousand number, that's about nine percent of the total ShotSpotter responses over the period of our inquiry. So we looked at data from the beginning of twenty twenty through the middle of twenty twenty one. There were just over fifty-one thousand dispatched responses to ShotSpotter alerts, and about forty-five hundred of those were coded out as related to a gun-related crime. So that's where the nine percent.
Got you. Thank you. And this is actually just a personal question for me. As I'm just a citizen who's not like a data person, I'm trying to understand. I've had an incident where my neighbor fired a gun in the air. I think I've talked about this publicly before, and he ran in the house. And then I'm looking out my window and I see, parked my car going, so I look out the window and I see the police pull up, and the guy comes back out and sits on the porch, and the cop is like, hey, have you, did you hear anything? Did you see anything? Now, I know he just shot his gun, as Nathan mentioned, he was just shooting his gun in the air at four P M. But the cop just drove off. But I, what I saw was that it was a good chance he would have just kept playing with his gun if the police didn't pull up. How would something like that show up in the data or in the numbers in your report? Or is that like a, do you view that as maybe a positive or a negative outcome?
That's a great question, and I think it gets to the fact that data is an imperfect way to capture police response and public safety response. You know, the, the conclusion in our report is that the data we analyzed did not demonstrate an operational benefit of the use of ShotSpotter. We did not conclude that there was no operational benefit, but that the data we analyzed didn't reflect it. And I think that the example you give there is a very, very good illustration of the sort of operational benefit which might be outside the data. And I think that it is exactly this sort of exercise, which allows us to capture more data than what is in the nine one one call histories to make a well-informed decision. Public policy decisions and public resource allocation decisions should be made in a well-informed, data-driven way, which, which captures lived experience of Chicagoans.
Thank you. So that, there may be further questions for you as this goes on, but I also wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity. If there was something specific you wanted to say, or if you just wanted to answer questions?
No, I'm happy to answer any other questions, and I appreciate the invitation to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My next question, I'll direct to Daryl Smith. Can somebody give me a time check? I'm not aware of how long we if, well, can somebody on staff give me a check on if I'm behind or on schedule? My next question, I'll, I'll direct to Daryl Smith. When a city is considering either adding or getting rid of policing technology, what type of outreach do you think should be done with communities that are most impacted to where the technology is or will be deployed? You need me to ask that in a different way?
Repeat that again.
Yeah, so I'm basically asking, you, you mentioned earlier, you, you said something along the lines of if your community doesn't need it good, then get rid of it in your community. I'm asking, there's a clear through line here where, where folks feel like not, the type of outreach needed was not happening. What do you think needs to happen as the city of Chicago is making decisions as far as outreach before they make these types of decisions?
Well, first of all, I think community organizations like my, my organization and other organizations need to be brought to the table so they can hear it from the people who have boots on the ground, not just from the authorities, not just from a A B citizen, but from organizations that's actually out there seeing what's happening, seeing how ShotSpotter is helping or not helping. We need a voice as community organizations. And I'm for ShotSpotter, but when we talk about redirecting funds, no one ever mentioned redirecting the funds to these not-for-profit organizations that's out there actually risking our lives with no salary. So I think that we need to sit, a seat at the table to really get our input on what we think about what's going on in the communities.
Thank you. Yes. And I've, I've been told that I'm a little bit over time, so I'm going to ask two concluding questions and ask that the two folks I'm going to direct it to keep their answers brief. The first is going to be to Deputy Chief Ben, and that question is, if the city does not renew the ShotSpotter contract, what happens when it's turned off? Will it impact the functionality of the S D S C rooms and the camera technology? So the, the question is simply, if the city, if this thing goes away tomorrow, what is, what is the impact that you see on the department in, in regards to the S D S C rooms?
Well, the S D S C rooms will still be there, and we will utilize the other tools that we have in our toolbox. And what was the other part to it?
That's it. Just, just what, I'm, we're just wondering what the impact is. If tomorrow this thing is turned off, how do you see it impacting it? I don't know if you, you kind of nodded at me a little bit.
Maybe expound a little what Deputy Ben is saying is that there's S D C rooms now across the city, now all twenty-two police districts. All twenty-two police districts make use of them in unique ways that are always in an effort to drive community safety and, and prevent, obviously, violence. So as Chief Ben mentioned, it's one of the tools in the toolbox, but obviously, we've developed a a robust system in these rooms, and we're able to operate. We'll, we'll find a way, essentially what it comes down to. We do it in other places.
Thank you. And, and the last question is for this part of the panel is to CEO Ralph Clark, and that is, we hear a lot about ShotSpotter in other cities. Can you tell us how many other cities it's in and how it's functioning, particularly in cities that are large in scope, are large in scope like the city of Chicago?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So we're currently deployed in approximately a hundred and sixty cities. We have over one thousand square miles deployed. We've been doing this for a number of years, and it's performing very, very well. We have a ninety-nine percent renewal rate. So that's saying that our customers are finding value in this. They're renewing every year. Several are even expanding. Large cities that we've deployed in are cities like New York City, close to a hundred square miles. We're in Detroit, we're in Albuquerque, we're in Houston. We're in medium-sized cities like Oakland, California, my hometown. We're in San Francisco, we're in Pasadena, we're in Memphis, Baltimore, Washington, D C, Boston. You could, you could go down the list. And so we get the opportunity to see this technology deployed in ways that are saving lives and helping make communities safer. And I just wanted to make a very quick point, if I could, is I, I would hope that everyone understands that the issue of gun violence is an extraordinarily complex issue. And what's really frustrating is when we try to make it singular, like there's one single solution to solving the problem or making it an either-or case. I, I appreciate the idea that we want to reinvest in our communities. For me, it's all hands on deck. You need everything you possibly can gather up resource-wise to help solve this, this particular problem. It's not either or. It's, it's and, 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 and.
And this is not a prepared question, but this is actually a, a question that was, it came, it came from the Stop ShotSpotter campaign, and it did resonate with me, so I will, I will pose this question to you. And that question is, it's been said or alleged that the goalpost has been moved, that originally ShotSpotter was sold as a crime prevention and deterrent technology, and now it is being held as a lifesaving tool and not what it was originally being sold to community as. And I'm, I guess my, my question to you, not, and I don't, well, yeah, is, is that the case?
Well, it's not the case. If anyone follows me on social media, you can see I've been writing about this issue for a very long time. I believe that the issue of gun violence is extraordinarily complex. I've always said publicly that ShotSpotter can't be held responsible for preventing and reducing gun violence. But as a, but as a, I beg your pardon? Are you asking a question?
Please, please, please do not respond to the audience. If you're an audience member, please do not direct questions at panels. There's a, there's a time for that. Thank you.
So it's an incredibly powerful tool because what we know is eighty to ninety percent of gun violence situations don't generate a nine one one call, which means there's no response. And when you have no response, you miss opportunities to save lives, collect evidence, and yes, sometimes you will have some enforcement actions as well. But the idea really is about saving lives and helping make communities safer.
Thank you. We will now move on to commissioner questions. I'd ask that commissioners, please keep their questions brief. I think we allotted for two questions per commissioner. And I know there are some folks who are virtual and who have text questions to other commissioners. So if it's a question from, say, Commissioner Beth Brown, or or Commissioner Nellis who are virtual, please state that the question is coming from them. We'll just go down the line on my right, and I'll pass it to Commissioner Terry.
Thank you all for being here this evening and sharing your thoughts. This first question comes from Commissioner Beth Brown, who is joining us virtually. And it's actually for you, IG Witsburg. The question reads, the, in the I G report on ShotSpotter, what was your conclusion about the correlation, if there was any, between ShotSpotter alerts and higher incidences of traffic stops?
We looked at, in the second finding of our report, we looked at a correlation, not with, not with traffic stops specifically, but with investigative stops, which are documented in CPD's investigative stop reports or ISRs. And what we found there was that there's, there was a very small population of ISRs which had an, an event number that matched the event number of ShotSpotter alert. In some additional ISRs, which did not have a matching event number, there was, in the narrative portion, a discussion of ShotSpotter reports, which tended to be framed as an impression of the prevalence of ShotSpotter alerts in an area to provide part of the basis for a stop, so part of the justification for stopping someone. So we found, and examples of these are included in the reports, narratives where officers would say, in listing the reasons that they detained someone, they would include, you know, high rate of ShotSpotter alerts in the area. So not referring to any specific report, any specific alerts, but sort of the officer's impression of the prevalence of ShotSpotter alerts in the area. And so the conclusion that we make there is that the presence of ShotSpotter sensors in certain areas appears to be impacting the way police are interacting with members of the community, even outside the instance of a specific response.
Thank you. So these next two questions are two questions that I have. I gather one would be for Nathan, and the other would be for Ralph, I believe, are the two names. So the first question I have deals with the numbers and demographic data of those who are in support of this removal of ShotSpotter. And so if you have any of this data around the demographic, meaning race, gender, age, time, living in districts like the tenth district, eleventh district, and fifteenth district, you may not have all of that now, but I would like to have data on who are those individuals in communities such as that, and subsequently on the South Side where there are high rates of gun violence and shots and things of that nature. What does that look like in those who are supporting the removal of ShotSpotter? And then the other question I have for Ralph, it deals with the data related to the gun detection. So who owns the data for this technology? How is it used, and what is needed to make it transparent to the public?
So first, short answer? Yes and no. We didn't conduct anything, but there was a study that I believe was either commissioned by the cops or Ralph that showed folks were in favor of it. Like, I don't want to be hiding nothing, but that's also like all of the data that show ShotSpotter worked, ShotSpotter commissioned. And yeah, that's, that's what I got for you.
The virtual folks cannot hear you.
Oh, my bad. So what I said was, yes and no. We don't have any of our own data. There was a little thing done, I believe it was either by CPD or Ralph, that showed people were in favor of it, but you know, whenever CPD talks about themselves, whenever a company talks about themselves, everyone loves them. So in my experience, canvassing for treatment, for treatment on trauma, shout out to you, Anthony, for helping with that, canvassing for ShotSpotter, being in community with people who like, experience this stuff, is that it is a very complicated opinion. There is the immediate want for someone to be there. And I think Black Roots Alliance and the Public Defenders found how people generally feel about cops as black Chicagoans, as black Chicagoans. And the feeling is, if they actually were able to help, they want them. No one's for abolition, no one's back the blue mostly, and I'm sure it is similar to ShotSpotter as we've heard from community members who have had stories who want ShotSpotter. It is, it is trying to address a very real thing. But when we also talk to community members who deserve our empathy and humanity, who may be on the other side of gun violence in one instance, but then another side in another, there's still fear around what the cops are going to do. We hope to do a deep canvas and community engagement this summer. We tried to do that with this petition to get more of that information and to see really how we can work in the communities to address that.
Great. So I'll answer the ownership question. So as a matter of con, contract, Sound Thinking owns the data, but the city has the right, or CPD has the full right to use the data in its pursuit of responding to violent crime and also sharing it with other entities to drive their mission. There was a mention earlier of one of the, I guess, representatives that came up and spoke about the use of comsets, comstat at the very local level. That's a very powerful reuse of the data to help engage community discussions about what's going on in their particular neighborhoods with respect to violent crime as it relates to gunfire. The fact that the O I G could actually do the very robust report that it did, it relied on ShotSpotter data, again, the full use of that data in a manner of transparency to investigate the question about the value of the technology. So there's nothing really limiting the city or the department from using the data in ways that are helping drive the city's and department's mission.
My question is for Inspector General Witsburg, so I'll give you a second to stand up. Thanks. Okay, so we're, we're having a strong conversation about the value of data and where data comes from and how data is used. And when I read your report, one of the things that resonated with me was your comments within the report and the comments that you made here tonight about the data that was available to you. Would you? First of all, I think you and I could probably agree, and you can tell me if we don't, but I think you and I agree, and I've read reports unrelated to ShotSpotter, where the inspector general has repeatedly emphasized the fact that CPD's overall data and record-keeping suffers from some significant deficits. I think that's largely because of technology issues. It's, it's related to, you know, several other things. I was hoping that in order to put the data analysis issue in context, that you could elaborate a little bit on what those data-related deficits are. And that's my first question. My second question is, in your experience as the inspector general, and from my viewpoint, I think that the resolution of data deficits and our ability to appropriately analyze data so that we can use it in an effective manner can often be solved through the crafting of appropriate policies that involve input from stakeholders and get to the heart of what information do we need? How do we track it, and then how do we use it? So could you just discuss more generally what those data deficits are? How to solve for those data deficits? And then what that analysis would look like after those things were accomplished?
Absolutely. I appreciate the question, and, and I, I certainly Absolutely. I appreciate the question and, and I, I certainly do agree with the premise of the first part of your question, that there are foundational widespread challenges um, with the um, the completeness and the quality of CPD data. That's by no means unique to the Chicago Police Department. That is a, a challenge across law enforcement. Law enforcement entities are not set up to be data gathering organizations, nor would we want them to be. It is certainly the case that there are technology-driven challenges. There are operational challenges. There are training shortcomings. The collection of those things, um, again, none of them sort of ill will motivated on the part of CPD, but I, the, the collection of those circumstances certainly has resulted in a um, a situation in which there are real decisions to be made where we from an oversight perspective and the department from a management perspective and the city from a stakeholder perspective are not equipped to, to make data-driven decisions because we simply don't have the information to do that. The, the operational value, the question of the operational value of ShotSpotter, I think is one of those questions. And we say that, we lay that out, I think, as, as clearly as possible in our report to say that um, again, the data that was, that is available to us um, or was available during that period of inquiry, did not demonstrate an operational value of this tool. We explicitly say in the report, and I would reiterate here, that if in fact there is data which demonstrates that operational value from a transparency perspective, I would welcome that being part of this sort of public conversation. And in terms of what that analysis would look like, I think it could look a number of different ways. We published this report um, about two and a half years ago. I have not seen in those intervening two and a half years um, kind of a re- um, a remodeling of this, of the similar analytical question to see if the, if the um, see if sort of the lines have moved on, on what this analysis would show. And we have not, to be clear, we have not formed an updated analysis. It is also true, I think back to a point that um, the president driver raised a few minutes ago. The data, the, the rows of data in a spreadsheet on nine one one calls, that, that plainly does not capture the whole picture. Either on the part of the experience of Chicagoans who need help in an emergency or the members of the police department responding. So I think it's important to say that as well. But I guess the short answer, um, such that there is one here, is that I agree with you that there are widespread data challenges. Those data challenges compromise our ability to make well-informed data-driven decisions. And I think that this is one of those circumstances.
So before I ask my next question, I do um, I would just ask for a point of privilege to provide a little context as to why I'm asking. You know, we're back in St. Sabina tonight and I sat here this summer when we were doing our superintendent search. And this church was packed. Um, it was packed. And person after person after person came up to the microphone and talked to us about what they were looking for in their superintendent. I think we found that in Superintendent Snelling. I believe that he's the leader that the community called for. And I have listened to him speak over and over again. We were on the West Side last week. Where one of the, the women who spoke tonight, her other sister spoke about the loss of their brother and I'm so sorry for that loss. The point I want to make is this. Thus far Superintendent Snelling has been our superintendent since September. Since September, he has demonstrated significant results that answer the calls that we heard here in this room from community, as well as the calls that we heard from community on the West Side and all across the city. He's demonstrated significant reductions in crime. He's demonstrated um, increased community trust. He has demonstrated that he is a very willing and open partner to work with the CCPSA. In fact, we set some very strident goals for him and he embraced those with open arms. I say all that because I struggle with the issue of data. I struggle with your report, which I don't dispute the accuracy of. However, that is data that was collected under a different administration. And if any person here tuned in when we did our very first budget hearing with that administration, I myself questioned the superintendent, the former superintendent for over an hour. And what he conveyed during that questioning crystal clearly was that he had identified pillars of policing. He had no plan whatsoever to implement them. We currently have a superintendent who is working very diligently to have a plan. And I struggle with the concept of utilizing old data from a prior administration with no plan at all to assess the value of an investigatory and law enforcement tool in this administration, where we do have a superintendent and staff surrounding him who actually intend to use their tools and the data that they have available to them to solve some of the problems that people have identified here tonight, such as slow response times, such as lack of community trust. And so my next question is for um, Ralph from ShotSpotter. Recognizing that CPD does have this data collection deficit, my question to you is, is there an opportunity if the ShotSpotter contract were renewed for ShotSpotter to provide additional support to CPD to accurately and adequately collect data that could be used not only, you know, to save lives when the shot detection goes off, but to actually collect really sound data that can be useful in the allocation of resources in assigning police officers to districts at the right time, on the right days, when crime and shooting is going up. Like what can ShotSpotter do with this technology to help us with data? Is ShotSpotter willing to do that? And is ShotSpotter willing to do that without additional cost to our city? And no other funds coming from the statutory um, allocation?
Yeah. So the very short answer is uh, yes, yes, and yes. Part of our organization is a customer success organization, which partners with our local law enforcement agencies to help bring about policy best practices that we're seeing across the nation. I think one of the initiatives that we're really excited about, uh, that I think could find a uh, good solid footing here in the city of Chicago is our Data for Good program, which is about repurposing ShotSpotter data to help better inform uh, violence interruption resources to a very specific uh, level to kind of get in front of uh, some of these issues. So we would certainly uh, be willing to partner with the city and CPD to bring about that change.
So I have uh, about two questions. Uh, my first one is uh, again for Ralph. So you know, like Anthony said, this hearing is really our commission's first time fact-finding and looking into this issue. Uh, you know, we don't know if Chicago will be in the ninety-nine percent that apparently renew their contracts or the one percent that don't renew their contract. And we'll find that out from the mayor's office in likely a couple of days. But what I believe that we've definitively seen tonight is both clearly some positive opinions of ShotSpotter and also a lot of negative opinions, a lot of heartache, a lot of hurt. So my question to you, you know, this, this seems like an unsustainable state to be in. If the contract is renewed, what would be your community engagement plan to get on the ground and to talk to people? And to really be in the community here in Chicago?
So we, we certainly appreciated the opportunity to be in this forum to share uh, the work that we do and uh, why we do it. And I'd just make a couple of observations to be very clear. So ShotSpotter doesn't know anything about race, gender, personality, facial recognition, anything like that. We know the when, the where and how many of gunshot. So this is extremely uh, narrow technology focused on a gun being fired and getting that alert to a uh, local law enforcement agi- agency, in this particular case, Chicago PD, so that they can get an immediate, fast and precise response to that location. And in doing so, um, be able to save lives, collect physical forensic evidence. And yes, sometimes even engage in uh, enforcement uh, interventions. And these are the things that build community trust. I haven't talked to very many communities that don't uni- in a unified voice say, if someone fires a gun in my neighborhood, I want to see a first responder response. There's no, there's no question about that. And when you understand that eighty to ninety percent of gunfire don't generate a nine one one call, so that you're not getting that response, there's a significant missed opportunity and that, that doesn't build trust. Okay? That reduces trust.
Thank you. I want to let you finish. I think, um, just want to make sure that everybody is aware that we do have audience questions. This is a mistake that I own. I was not aware of time as I was asking the questions that were uh, pre-prepared ahead of time. So if the panelists who are answering can be as brief as possible and also the uh, commissioners that are asking the questions, uh, we do want to get to audience question. Thank you. And I apologize.
And again, the question was what would be your community engagement plan if the contract is renewed?
Yes, again, so we, we have a customer success organization. Uh, we actually have a specific community engagement, customer success director that's here assigned with uh, Chicago. Uh, we have two bodies on that particular um, uh, initiative. And we, we have to do that in partnership with CPD. We can't do that by ourselves. We have to do it in partnership with Chicago Police Department. But we certainly have the resources and intention to be able to bring that about.
Uh, I guess my next question is uh, again for you Ralph, and I'll keep this one short. So you know, I used to work in tech sales myself and we would say, you know, our product is a hundred percent effective. And you're not held accountable until there's any independent verification of that. So I guess my question is, you know, you've said that uh, it's ninety-seven, it has ninety-seven percent efficacy. You know, how can cities verify that? If you're the ones detecting shots, you know, how would they possibly verify that? Is it that they run independent tests? You know, what does that look like?
Yeah. So if you were in, in technology sales, uh, you know that um, you have contracts, service level agreement contracts. And when you don't perform, a customer reports a bug. And if there's too many bugs, you have, you have a, you have a issue with the contract, right? And then there's bugs that you report that get fixed. So the way that we know the system isn't working or isn't performing, uh, and again, is performing at a very high rate is based on customer feedback. We, we require customer feedback. And it's really no different than when you buy a Samsung TV. The only way that Samsung knows that your TV doesn't work is if you tell them it doesn't work. And if it doesn't meet the warranty, you take the TV back. And that's, that's no different with us or any other enterprise software solution. It's the same.
Okay, sorry. Uh, but these are also questions that the community is gonna share. So I'm gonna ask them very quickly. To anyone from CPD that can answer this. My understanding of the way that a call is dispatched, and I'm only giving this for context, is that once the data is gathered by ShotSpotter, reviewed by a human, goes to an SDSC room, reviewed by another human, then the data is given to OMC that will then dispatch. My question is not about that. My question is what protocols does the officer that respond to that call have to follow?
Are you asking when they're responding to the ShotSpotter call? What protocols do they take?
If I am an officer and I'm alerted that there is a ShotSpotter alert that is verified by the SDSC room as a potential gun like firing, what protocols do I follow as an officer?
They follow, follow the protocols of our general orders that every day that they get a call of like this, they will respond as they would do to any call. Go out, they respond to the call. If they get their shots have been fired, they handle the job as normal.
A quick follow-up that is somewhat related but different. What, please, what training do officers have to respond to a person that is injured or potentially shot? What training? I know this is something that has been brought up. What kind of medical assistance can an officer deliver?
They will render aid and if the, if a person is shot and they will be able to put a tourniquet or a chest compression on. So they have the tools on their tool belt to render aid to individual that is shot.
Do you have any estimate on how many of those uh, as emergency assistance are, have been done in the past, let's say year or approximation?
We started collecting injured, aid rendered information towards the tail end of twenty twenty in the case reports. So that's more or less around the time where I feel confident I could give you an idea. To the best of my estimate, I, I believe when it's directly related like a ShotSpotter event, there's probably been upwards of four hundred people that have had aid rendered, whether it be a tourniquet or a chest seal or a pressure bandage to stop the bleeding prior to the arrival of the paramedics.
Is, and is the number higher when you consider all the data? Not just ShotSpotter data?
Oh, I'm sure most likely yes. I'm just speaking specifically of like a ShotSpotter initiated call.
Okay. Can I ask one more, Anthony?
Can I ask a follow-up? You said you started collecting this data in twenty twenty.
Specifically in the case where we've made changes, obviously modifications to how we, again, we've had our, we, I, maybe we have different issues when we're collecting data. That's one of the things that was implemented. So that doesn't mean that's the only time we've done it. What that means is that's the time I feel confident giving you an answer.
The four hundred number, sorry, that's one of thirty. The four hundred plus number that you just gave, you're saying that as an estimate, there is about four hundred people since twenty that have gotten aid that was related to a ShotSpotter alert.
That's really helpful, just like factual information to know. The word operational value, I think is a word that should be in everybody's mind. And I appreciate the inspector general giving a very honest and, you know, ethically bound answer to how we should be using data. Cause I think a lot of people can get hung up expecting that data will answer all our questions when a lot of these questions have to do with how we make decisions. But this question is for the people that like to imagine things in the room, but I'm gonna specifically pose it to Tenny and to Ralph, because something that Nathan uh, mentioned really kind of ignited a light bulb in my mind. Nathan said that if ShotSpotter uh, were to be a package or a product that was able to deliver a assistance in, you know, people that are not responding just from the police, right? Other parts of, of, and by the way, to the uh, uh, to the CBI community um, that's here, like you guys are also part of the, the people that are already responding, right? So it's important that we all know that. It's not just police officers that are responding to this ShotSpotter data. We've heard a lot of facts saying that there's other people responding. But um, to Nathan's point, are there any products, and Tenny, knowing your knowledge of other cities, are there any products similar to ShotSpotter? It doesn't just have to be sonar detection that use a more holistic kind of approach? And uh, to Ralph, do you sell any of your products in, to any jurisdiction that uses a more thorough holistic approach that doesn't just share the data with the police department or the nine one one dispatch service?
I apologize. I'm not familiar with enough other systems. It doesn't mean they are not there. I'm a real believer that we are the customers, we're the citizens and it is, this discussion, this energy is really important and I'm grateful to Nathan and everyone else here, as well as law enforcement. We all have input and I hope we all believe people can change. We are believers in second, third, fourth chances. We should believe that about law enforcement as well. So on the responses, we have tagged along to law enforcement with the concern that we couldn't be co-opted. This technology is a tricky thing. Uh, right? We want that knowledge. We don't want to be by a big system then co-opted. That is a tension for us. And being uh, informed with community and making sure we are keeping ourself uh, how we call it, within uh, ethics at, at place is really, really important. So there is, I think there's a lot of energy around, there is a disproportionate power here. And when someone was asking here about ShotSpotter during their research, we're being researched all the time by independent groups. I think Robert Vargas from Invest of Chicago brings that point. I think we're the customers. We want our own independent evaluation of that. That will be one of my recommendations. If we're gonna, again, someone mentioned at the beginning, they want to ground us into solutions. It's important to have solutions. We hear the, the mothers who lose their loved ones and we hear the young generation has a lot of energy that when a department or all of us just can be lazy on relying on technology too. We gotta keep working on that. Sorry.
Yeah. So I'll just mention again, our Data for Good initiative, um, a way to repurpose ShotSpotter data to uh, better inform uh, violence interruption efforts. We have a separate uh, solution called Resource Router Community, uh, which is a, a different version than the Hunch Lab uh, solution that I think was deployed in the Strategic Decision Support Centers um, uh, several uh, years ago. But we've invested quite a bit of um, programming um, and functionality in that solution and pivoted it to make it usable by violence interruption organizations. Essentially what it does is allows you to track your uh, violence interrupter resources, give them a allows you to track your violence interrupter resources, give them a playbook of activities that they should be doing and be able to track their effectiveness and follow through with those initiatives. So we'd be happy to have those discussions with Chicago PD to see if there's any interest in moving forward on that.
Really quickly, can you repeat the name of that program, Data for?
Data for Good, which is essentially the repurposing of ShotSpotter data and then Resource Router Community, which is a separate solution altogether, which is a resource management tool that essentially ingests a bunch of data and then provides essentially a work plan for violence interruption groups. And then you can track their activities along with a playbook to make sure that they're executing to the playbook.
So that's that is the complexity that I know if I'm not sure we're ready for. In Miami, I think somewhere I heard a deputy chief said that they're tracking outreach and where they are, et cetera. I can tell you in Chicago, we will not allow law enforcement to track how we are evaluate our effectiveness. Otherwise, I would want to track where every police car is, et cetera. So we're very fierce about our own independence. We're a profession. We're very demanding of ourselves. We get evaluated. That independence between civilians and law enforcement is extremely important to the integrity of all of us.
Thank you. So this next question comes from Commissioner Cliff Nellis, who's attending virtually, and it is for Mr. Clark. In Cook County Criminal Court, there is a case, People versus Merritt Jones, where the court is holding a fry hearing to assess the reliability of the ShotSpotter technology. Subpoenas were issued for information about the reliability of the technology for the court to review, which were fought by the company. Is ShotSpotter sending the required documents for court to review? Do you know what the status of this fry hearing is?
My apologies, I do not.
So that concludes the Q and A part of this. Q and A part of this with the commissioners will now move to some audience questions that were submitted to us. The first two questions I will just answer briefly. If somebody on staff can assist her, she's been trying to get a question in a while. And just help me understand. I don't know what she's saying. I can't hear it. Okay. The first question is, and I'm going to quickly go through these, and I'll ask again the panelists, be even brief for them before, as we try to get through these audience, some of these audience questions, we will not get to all of them. How did the CCPSA come up with the composition of the panel? And was it by coincidence that over half of the panel is pro-ShotSpotter? Does that does that reflect the impartial narrative of the hearing? So when we were composing this panel, we wanted to make sure that stakeholders were the people who are speaking. The CPD is the people that are using the technology. Ralph Clark is the person that is the CEO of the technology. Daryl Smith is a person who uses it on the ground. Tenny Gross is a person who uses the technology from a community violence perspective. Is that every deputy chief, name everybody? Nathan is a person who comes from the Stop Shot Shot ShotSpotter campaign, who was one of the one of the groups who initiated this. So this was not made to be in any biased way. And and as you all know, I'm a very open, honest and frank person. Please fill your my emails and if you fill your CC me on it so I can send it to you unredacted. But but what I will say to you is that this issue is nuanced and complex. There are two people, specifically Tenny and Daryl, I want to applaud for being here because most of the community violence organizations did reach out and share their opinion, but they were scared to come here tonight. And they were scared because they said, Anthony, we receive city funds. We receive state funds. And and again, I've call it like it is, these organizations have reached out and said, we use this technology. There's one that's the big, one of the biggest organizations in the city that said, I don't use it at all. It's a tool for CPD. I have no idea what's going on with it. And he was very open and honest about that. There are other organizations who said, we don't want to see this go. We're scared to see it go, but we will not accept your invitation to sit on this panel because we will not put our funding in jeopardy that we use to help people on it. That's the reality of what we're dealing with. As you can see, this is an issue that is affecting the community in a very serious way and there's divided opinions on this. So we tried to put together a representative panel and this was not made, I didn't know Daryl was going to say in his opening remarks, but what I do know is that Daryl's been a resident in my community for over fifty four years before I was born. And what I do know is he stopped countless shootings himself. I've seen him show up over and over. He was one of the people who just wasn't scared to come and speak his mind. That was not made to be something that was biased. The next question. How's the CCPSA considered the data that shows how ineffective ShotSpotter is? What data included? What data included how other there's other cities' decisions around ShotSpotter affected the use of this contract? We have considered every single perspective that I believe can be considered. We have talked to hundreds of community members. We have invited experts from around the country from those cities. We've invited experts from in this city. We've talked to community violence organizations, talked to district council members. You name it, we have reached out to them and asked them specifically about this issue. We have taken in and shout out to the Stop ShotSpotter campaign. They sent us a bunch of documents that were thoroughly read and we've had meetings with them. So the answer to your question is yes, we have considered this data and as we've considered the inspector general's report, as we've considered the data that comes from Ralph Clark and the Sound Thinking Organization. And now I'm going to, I think we have questions. Enough room for like maybe six questions. So again, to the panelists, please try to be as quick as possible. I'm going to ask two quick questions of of Ralph Clark, and I haven't read these ahead of time. So if something is wildly off in these community questions, I'm not censoring it. More gun violence equal more profits for ShotSpotter. Why should community members believe you want to reduce gun violence?
This is quite personal for me. My friend's life was saved because of a ShotSpotter alert. He was shot in Oakland, California in the middle of the day at a gas station that I've been at frequently. And as he was sat there bleeding out, he was begging people to call nine one one. And the first reaction of folks was to film it. And it was because of the ShotSpotter alert that got police there before the first nine one one calls came in that got him to the hospital. And he's alive today for three reasons, the grace of God, a ShotSpotter alert, and a very tri- very skilled trauma care surgeon. So this work is personal for me. And I know that we're making a difference across a hundred and sixty communities every day with respect to saving lives. I'll cut.
I'm I'm very concerned about pending lawsuits with ShotSpotter. We can't even I'm very concerned about a pending lawsuit with ShotSpotter that we can't even talk about. So my question for the sake of transparency, how many pending lawsuits outside of Chicago does ShotSpotter slash Sound Think have, Sound Thinking have?
There's no current lawsuits where we're engaged in currently. The most recent one, Rochester, we were dismissed from that particular case.
How much money did you pay Edgewater Analytics for their study? And how much did you pay Corey Haberman? And I don't know who that person is, though. Huberman, sorry if you're worried.
So we work with a number of consultants from time to time. I don't feel like it's appropriate that I have to say how much we're spending on consultants. So that's my answer on that one.
So the next question is for Deputy Chief Ben, the third district, the third police district, oh, from Anthony Bryant, third police district council member. How many times a general percentage has police provided? Eight. That was kind of answered, right? Are you good on that question? What is the margin of error for ShotSpotter? And that wouldn't be a question for her. That would be for you, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, again, we have a contractual guarantee of ninety percent and we're operating at ninety seven percent.
I'll give Nathan a chance to respond.
Um, to Anthony's first question and also to respect Sonora Ben's experience and everyone's experience. We are not also to respect everyone's experience with using this technology to potentially save lives. Again, we it like, why can't we provide emergency, let the ambulance show up. Then to the false positive report, that contractual report. So ShotSpotter. When they are saying ninety percent, they are using their own data. They are using CPD data or whatever customer they have. They are assuming that each and every time an alert goes off, it must be a gunshot and they are marking it as such until an officer who we know, officers often lie, like that one case that Jinx Press just reported on, on officers using ShotSpotter to steal people's guns that they were not shooting and that they had a constitutional right to have. So it assumes that police do not lie when we know that they do because we know people who have had shit planted on them because we know people who have been lied on and thrown in jail. So we know that they lie, so we cannot trust this ninety percent, this point five. And in Chicago, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. And in Chicago, this point five false positive rate, they turn off the the mics on New Year's Eve and Fourth of July because they know it can't identify this stuff. Automatically, those two weekends make that false positive rate wrong.
Can I can I get a response? Because that's a very poignant accusation. I want to know that, please. So can a representative can a representative from the Chicago Police Department and or Mr. Clark answer if you all turn off your gunshot detection technology?
We do not.
It's in the contract.
We do not.
The contract, you can read the contract, it's in there.
We do not turn off the microphones. We are we are publishing alerts on New Year's Eve. We do not turn off the microphones or the sensors. It's it's a fact. Sorry. It's that's not in the I don't know what contract you're reading. That's not in the contract. We don't turn off. We don't turn off the sensors.
We're gonna, we're gonna move past this now. Thank you. The next, I'm going to really need you to stop with the outbursts. Please. All right. This question is addressed to Nathan. To to those who advocate the discontinuance of the ShotSpotter, what technology do you recommend? Address to you.
Um, what? So I am a firm believer in community knowing the solutions. The reason why these two organizations right here know what their communities need is because they talk to their communities and respond according to what their communities need. I am a firm believer that I am responsible for my neighbor's well-being and that is my solution for all of this. I am a firm believer that the alternative, if we want to say, like, look, I'm not here to talk for community. If if Daryl and Tenny are saying that gunshot detection helps get them to a scene to help people that they know, let's do that. It doesn't need to be attached to the cops. It doesn't need to be attached to a private company that just has our data, bro. When have we ever trusted private companies to have our data? What be so for real right now? Like, my solution is listening to these community violence interrupters and providing them with every tool possible to address these needs as well as continuing to be out canvassing for Bring Chicago Home, continuing to work on Treatment Not Trauma, continuing my day job of working at Pillars Community Health to make sure people get healthcare, right? My solution is we all have to get involved in this and admit to ourselves that what we have been trying for four hundred years clearly doesn't work. Otherwise, we wouldn't be in this position.
The last submitted written question is addressed to Mr. Gross. It says, how could the statistics and data generated via use of ShotSpotter technology lead to a future where instead of police responding retroactively to violence, the investment will proactively address the root problems of gun violence? It's addressed to you.
I want to get to the day where we had, yesterday I read in the Tribune about a homicide of an Uber driver that we respond to in December and the young man who was allegedly involved was arraigned. When I dug into our information, was shot before, recently before. And we failed to connect. We cannot always get into the hospitals. There was, so we deal with daily frustration and barriers and so we need to have the ideal really of thinking that, but we also got to admit to capacities, you know? CPD and us and all of us, I mean, I I apologize to young people all the time. I didn't create the wrong interpretation of the Second Amendment. I did not create Indiana and Wisconsin or flood city with guns, but they're here. And I can tell you, an ambulance will not show up to a shooting scene without law enforcement. And that's sort of, this is also realities that it won't happen. And sometimes even we cannot. So yeah, the solution is long term to be more and more ambitious, that the relationships are so good that eventually we will not be needed, let alone law enforcement, right? Young people would be arguing about which play they're putting on. But we're dealing with it now and we got to win ourself and that your instinct is correct. And we've been dedicating our life to win ourself on reliance on only gun solution responsive. But the moment outreach workers are failing real life and death. We lost an outreach worker. We had an out a female outreach worker was shot in the middle of a gang territory, sorry, a drug, alleged drug dealing territory on Jackson and Pulaski. So and on and on. We lost a flip participant, five in the morning. Was on monitoring and those are really personal painful losses for us. So I want us to get better. Every homicide or shooting is a personal failure. Which I try and drive us to think what we could have done more. Don't just think about other system, what we could have done. You want to get to be better. But we're all working with some serious limitations.
Anthony's letting me have the mic, so thank you. Just a couple of things that I want to make sure we level set on here because one of the things that's extremely frustrating for us as commissioners is that there's public comment and then sometimes things get lost in translation and we don't always get to explain. And then people walk out of our meetings without a clear understanding of what we're talking about. So there's a couple of things that I think are important to level set on. With respect to the question about the lawsuit that can't be spoken about, I think it's important to note that that lawsuit is not against ShotSpotter. ShotSpotter is not a named party to that lawsuit. It's a lawsuit against the city of Chicago, which is what prompts the carefulness about discussing it. So I want to make sure everyone is clear about that. One other point that I think is extremely important to make is related to the utilization of ShotSpotter information in court. There was a question about one of the commissioners about a fry hearing, which is a scientific hearing to make a determination as to whether or not certain scientific evidence can be admitted in a court, particularly in criminal cases, it comes up a lot. I do think it's extremely important for people to understand in terms of context that there may be scenarios in criminal court cases where the admission of some type of evidence related to gunshot technology would be relevant. But I think it's it's very significant to note that in criminal court cases, and I say this from experience as a Cook County prosecutor for a long time. In criminal court cases, we don't play the nine one one call every single case. We don't have to. It's not an element of most offenses that we are required to prove beyond a reasonable doubt. So to the extent that ShotSpotter technology becomes an issue in court, it's generally an issue in court for purposes of explaining how police actually got to the scene. But hypothetically, for purposes of of just crystallizing what I'm trying to say, if there was a murder that occurred outside these doors tonight and a person was shot dead and the offender was not caught immediately on the scene because ShotSpotter alerted, the cops came and they grabbed that offender, right? That happens very rarely, actually, in cases that it 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 happens a very small percentage of the time. If that did not happen, what would happen is that ShotSpotter alert would alert the police to come here. It would give them an opportunity to protect the scene. It would give them an opportunity potentially to get first responders here who could take care of that person or they could begin the process of assisting that, doing that themselves. What would happen operationally and working towards a prosecution is that that shooting would become the problem of the detective division. And detectives would investigate that crime. Six months later, hypothetically, Six months later hypothetically, if those detectives believed that they had a sufficient evidence to charge someone for that crime and the state attorney's office actually charged it. Whoa. How the police got to the scene would be a very small piece of evidence that falls within the context of course of conduct evidence. What would be very significant pieces of evidence would be things like eyewitness accounts, DNA evidence, ballistics evidence. Um, cooperator evidence, people who, who knew of a plan. Um, there are several different categories of evidence that would be used to either prove or not prove our hypothetical murder. The fact that a ShotSpotter alert went off would not be a piece of that evidence. So I think it's extremely important for people here today to understand. That while ShotSpotter certainly could come into play in a scenario like that. The likelihood that a ShotSpotter alert would be the one most prominent and significant piece of evidence. Is, it's highly unlikely, it's just not the way things work. Um, I'm not, I'm not asking a question, I'm just level setting.
Audience questioning. So first, so please, please be respectful. Please be respectful.
Um. The other point that I think is really significant to emphasize here tonight. Is that um, one of the things that Nathan just said in his last set of comments about. Karen, I'm sorry about that, they, I apologize, about what communities need. We were, we've spent our entire summer as commissioners in CCPSA, hearing from community members about what they. Personally came to various locations to tell us that they need. The most predominant sentiment that we heard repeatedly is that community members wanted to see and hear and experience.
I'm a district council member from the 12th district. And me and my fellow DCs are gonna be walking out because this is turning to cop again.
Yeah, he is also lying about how they use this evidence in court.
Um, community members have been repeatedly at our meetings and the most consistent thing we hear they need is a relationship.
Can, if you can, um, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, but this is getting really unwieldy. Um, and so I'm, I'm gonna ask that folks be respectful, if you can make the rest of your comments brief and then I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this.
Um, what we hear from community members is what they're really, what one of their priorities is, is relationships of trust between the community and the police. Um, there's plenty of reasons not to trust the police, you will never hear me say otherwise. However, one thing that I think is very significant to note is that in my estimation. Having police officers have a tool in their toolbox that gives them an opportunity to respond to shots. And potentially save the lives of people in that community. There can be no better mechanism for community trust building than that. And. I'm gonna say my piece.
So Yvette, if you don't, if you don't mind, if you, I'm, I'm so sorry to cut you off, if you could let me close. I, I'm sorry to cut you off, this meeting is getting out of hand and I'm also gonna ask that you please not do that again, the next person that does an outburst like that, I do not want to be the person that they're asking people to leave. She has a right, she is a CCPSA commissioner to speak, she has the floor right now, please be respectful. So, so let me, let me address something, let me address something real quick. And I want everybody in this room to hear me clearly. This issue is not as binary as you're making it. I don't care how many of y'all yell at me, how many of you disagree with me, I'm not up here taking a side one way or another. But what I will say is for people who, who have a ton of privilege, and that's what I've been seeing for the last year, to dictate to communities that live under gun violence every day, how they're supposed to feel? Be respectful. And I'm not gonna add y'all that again. That is not okay, that is not okay, and I came to this issue, I came to this issue completely. When I started at the CCPSA, the same way I did with the gang database, the same way I did with police arbitration, the same way I did with all these other issues, extremism within the force. We investigated, I came into it knowing I had an issue with ShotSpotter, I came into it knowing I had these issues. And then we're presenting information and we have to make a decision and look at what we're shown. And that is what we are trying to do, her perspective is valid, the perspective of community members who have dead kids is valid, the perspective of community members like Nathan who want to end this campaign is valid. But you do not have a right to be the loudest voice, we all gotta hear each other, and I mean that. And, and, and just to, just to be honest, I just told you, there is a very loud group that want to stop ShotSpotter and I hear them and I respect them. There's a group that says this is keeping us safe, I hear them, I respect them, they all have a right to talk. You can call this copaganda all you want, tell that to somebody who baby landed in the streets, tell that to Officer Oriana Preston, who laid up for thirty minutes, say that to her. Tell that to the people who live under threat of gun violence every day, you want to talk about data, you want to talk about what we did? This right here, before we came, before we came to this hearing. Before we came to this hearing, I had CPD, who are, how many, you can yell as much as you want, I can't, I don't even hear what you're saying. Here we are, if you, can somebody please escort her out?
Go away.
I'm not getting out. You, you, you do not get to dictate to communities that live under threat of gun violence how they're supposed to feel about it. I don't care how mad you get at me about that, we will hear them.
Too, we are a part of the community, it is unfair for a prosecutor to have this like.
I'm not disagree with you, I've let everybody up here talk. Listen to me, the la, I want to close with this, and I won't even share my opinion about this at all. The nuance that this issue requires is not what's being talked about. What I have in my hand right here is the number of nine-one-one calls and ShotSpotter alerts for this particular community. You're not hearing me say I'm for or pro ShotSpotter. What you are hearing me say, in the seventh district for the month of January to February. Eighteen percent of ShotSpotter alerts have a corresponding nine-one-one call. Now I don't care where you land on this issue. I could care less where you land on this issue, ultimately, this is a decision for Mayor Johnson to make. But eighteen percent, every day on the news, we are hearing about people who lay in the street. That is what I want to lift up, the impacted, the victims, I do not want the loudest voices on this issue to be the company. And an organized group of people who are against it, when there is a big group of Chicagoans who live under threat of violence who are not being heard. You can hate me for that all you want. And I knew coming into this that this was gonna be a very contentious issue. For us not to be able to be respectful of each other is really sad. It's really sad, and I, I, to take it a step further, we keep saying that this, this is copaganda, I keep hearing people say that this is not impartial. We've been in countless meetings with advocates, countless meetings with victims of gun violence, their voice is not being heard in this debate. It's nowhere to be found. Ultimately, Mayor Johnson will make this decision. I appreciate all of the panelists for coming out, I appreciate the audience for being respectful for the most part. If we fell short, I will work to fix that. I appreciate you, you fell short of being respectful, we both got some we could work on. Father Mike, if you'd like to come up and close this out.
I'd like to uh. I'd like to close out by saying. Ma'am. Ma'am, let me uh. Ma'am, ma'am, I have to be respectful. Let me close by saying this. And I'm not gonna take side on either side, but here's what I want, here's what I do want to point out. I know of a life. That was saved. Because. A, a, a spot shooter called the police to be there and save that person's life. Now, having lost a son. Two blocks from here, that makes a difference to me, if a life is saved by this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna believe in something that can, that can save a child's life and that was important to me, and if you're the parent of that child, that makes a difference to you, but let me lastly say this. I happen to be a big believer. And a big supporter. Of the superintendent we have right now. I did not care for or like the previous superintendent, I made that clear the whole time he was here. But I believe in Larry Snelling, I've known him for a long time. And at the end of the day, we can have all different sides and all different agreements or disagreements on this. But in my mind, if Larry Snelling is a cop who I've known for twenty years. If he says to me, this does help him or this doesn't help him. He needs to be given whatever tool he needs in order to bring this city into safety. I trust Larry Snelling. He's the cop in charge. Not the governor, not the mayor, or not any of us, he's gonna be held responsible. And if wherever he stands on this issue, I stand with him, he deserves to be given whatever he needs to be successful. I thank you all for coming tonight. Blessings on your way home, be respectful of each other.